All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. It is 7:03, and I hereby call to order the final meeting, the December meeting of 2023 of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. Would you please rise and join me for the pledge of flag, a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all? Thank you. We will begin with the village clerk's report. Clerk Bruno, please.
Yes, there were 648 trash bags sold this past month. Two payrolls were processed by treasurer Day. In the absence of deputy clerk, I stepped in to support the village's planning board, organized documents, emails, sending attendees to government and a delta contractor. The evening before Thanksgiving, I assisted gentlemen from Harrah Smith Post put together 92 Thanksgiving meals, which were delivered to a number of local people and their families. That same evening, I attended their November month of meeting on December 8. It was wonderful to be invited to and attend the Harrah Smith Post American Legion Holiday Party. Such a pleasure to be in their company, a very fun and festive event. And I would like to extend my sincere thanks to Jeanette from Hotel Tivoli in the corner for the lovely dinner and evening this past Monday. Along with a large number of volunteers from Tivoli Fire, we're invited to a holiday thank you event sponsored by Jeanette and her staff. It was another terrific evening hosted by the former, and we do definitely appreciate their support. Having been so closely involved with the Legion and Tivoli Fire these past weeks, I do find them to be just the hardest working groups of individuals. The Legion has been doing many special things for the public, and I do feel as if the members and volunteers of Tivoli Fire are the epitome of public servants, and I do wish them all, along with their families, happy and safe holidays. Speaking of holidays, the village clerk's office will be closed Monday, December 25th, and Monday, January 1st, to observe Christmas and New Year's Day. And then it will also be closed on Monday, January 15th, to observe Martin Luther King Jr.
Thank you, Clerk Bruno. And I want to reiterate that we're going to be closed two Mondays in a row. This happened last year, and Monday is a big day for coming to the clerk's office to get your garbage tags. And last year, on the second, you know, after that, it's been closed every Monday. Well, it's just how the holidays fall, so plan ahead and get your garbage tags so you don't have any trouble. Trustees, we have two sets of meeting minutes in your binders. We have November 15th regular meeting minutes and November 28th special meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
Second.
That was Mangieri, seconded by Schilling. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the treasurer's report. This month, out of the general fund, the aid fund, we spent $132,723.93, which is also our grand total. One thirty-two, seven twenty-three, ninety-three. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report? And a second?
Second.
That was Baldino, followed by Schilling. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to pay the bills? And a second?
Second.
Mangieri, followed by Schilling. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the zoning report, and we have, we're planning some catch-up tonight. We've got three months. We've got October, November, and December, so sit back, and trustee Schilling will fill us in.
We have building, all right, this is for October 17th, the report. Building permits reviewed, nine. Building permits issued, seven. Complaints, zero. Complaints investigated, zero. Zoning and property maintenance violations, two. Appearance tickets, zero. Municipal searches, one. Inspections, eight. November's report. Building permits reviewed, four. Building permits issued, three. Complaints, zero. Complaints investigated, zero. Zoning, property maintenance violations, zero. Appearance tickets, zero. Municipal searches, one. Inspections, ten. And then we have December's report. Building permits reviewed, six. Building permits issued, five. Complaints, zero. Complaints investigated, zero. Zoning, property maintenance violations, zero. Appearance tickets, zero. Municipal searches, two. Inspections, ten. That was the reports.
Thank you, trustee Schilling. Okay, we come to the point in our evening where we entertain public comment on agenda items. We have the agenda available here, so we have on our agenda tonight a resolution authorizing execution of amendment number one to the Fire Protection District Fire Service Agreement between the Town of Red Hook and the Village of Tivoli for 2023 and 2024. We also have a resolution related, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the LoSAP intermunicipal agreement, which is the general longstanding agreement between the town and the village for fire service. Thirdly, the Tivoli Fire Company had their elections recently, and we have a new slate of newly elected officers. Being a department of the village, the village board approves, the officers accepts those officers. And lastly, we have a budget modification related to the heating emergency we've been having at this building. I'll be talking about that more later, but it came all in to over $67,000. Fortunately, Tivoli's little slice of the American Rescue Plan Act funding is $110,000, so we have this money. So we didn't have to go out and bond to get the new furnace and related repairs, which again, I'll talk about later. So that's the last thing, just to designate the costs relating to getting the heat in this building back on track, that we will tap some of our ARPA funds for that. So with that brief overview, is there any public comment on those four agenda items? And also, I want to let everyone know, in case you don't recall, that the, we put something, we put the agenda and something we call the packet on the village website 24 hours before this meeting. So on meeting day, which is third Wednesday, you can get up and you can look over that packet on the village website under the village board agendas, and there you will find what is in our binders here. Full resolutions about LoSAP, for example, the list of the officers. So whatever we're up to, if you want to read up and come to the meeting and know exactly what we're voting on, we do put that packet, the legal requirement, 24 hours before the meeting. All right, so we're going to get into our agenda, and again, there's a chance for general and widespread public comment on any topic at the end of the meeting. Okay, trustees, first we have the resolution authorizing execution of amendment number one to Fire Protection District Fire Service Agreement between the Town of Red Hook and the Village of Tivoli for 2023, 2024. And for the public who are following the special elections on the LoSAP, that's the Length of Service Awards Program that were going on in October in the Village of Tivoli and the Village of Red Hook. Both municipalities approved the LoSAP increase. That is a small benefit. It's the length of service. If firefighters attend enough calls and trainings, et cetera, they score points, they get enough points, and a small amount of money is invested. And then when they turn 65, they can get a modest payout. It's a really nice way to say thank you. It's not a lot of money, but it's anything we can do to express our appreciation for those who volunteer. That's what LoSAP is about. So this is to update our contract that we're currently in with the town for 2023 and 24 with that new LoSAP number. With that, is there a motion to adopt the resolution? And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Do a roll call, please. Trustee Mangieri?
Aye.
Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
Trustee Schilling?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Our next, so that is a specific amendment to the current contract, 2324. Now, we're going to do an amendment to the general intermunicipal agreement regarding LoSAP. It's the same action, but in a different document, basically. Did I get that right? Close enough.
Just generally. Generally says this is how LoSAP is going to be managed among the new communities.
Thank you. Is there a motion authorizing execution of amendment to the LoSAP intermunicipal agreement? And a second?
A second.
That was Schilling, followed by Baldino. Any discussion? To say thank you to the voters and the volunteers and our fellow municipalities for pulling this all off this fall. The organization of the special elections had a few bumps in it with the, is that the state board elections? Yeah, so we got it done, and glad to have it done. Roll call, please. Trustee Mangieri?
Aye.
Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
Trustee Schilling?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Moving on to the Tivoli Fire Company Officers Listing for 2024. We have fire officers returning as chief after one year hiatus, as required. Mark Hildenbrand, First Assistant Chief Joshua Coons, Second Assistant Chief Dylan Griffiths, does have an S on his last name. Captain Michael Blum, First Lieutenant Aiden Miller, Second Lieutenant Chris La Puma, in the rescue, First Lieutenant Cheryl Hillbrant, Second Lieutenant Patrick Philibar, Fire Police Captain Glenn Baker, First Lieutenant Robin Bruno, Second Lieutenant Alan Jennings. Administration, President Wayne Hildenbrand, Vice President Dave Simmons, Treasurer Harold Ramsey, Recording Secretary Justin Sella, Corresponding Secretary Robert Bruno. Board of Directors, Ralph Torshia, Robin Bruno, Glenn Baker, Justin Sella. Congratulations to all those new officers and returning officers. Is there a motion to accept the officers listing for 2024? And a second?
Second.
All in favor? And lastly, we have a budget mod transferring Village of Tivoli American Rescue Plan Act funds for payment, payments of expenses related to the 2023 Village Hall heating emergency. When we fired up the furnace in November, it was kaput. And if you've been following along, we scrambled around. We got a temporary heating system set up here at Village Hall, a blower, a propane tank, and a 75-foot hose that went through the, into the basement, across the basement, up the stairs, into the hallway. It was pretty ragtag and a bit Ruud Goldberg, frankly. But we kept the heat on and kept going. While we were doing that temporary heating, we had to source and do an emergency RFP, request for proposals on a new boiler. Pleased to say that that boiler is installed and operating. We now have, we have switched to propane off of fuel oil, and we've got 2,000-gallon propane tanks now buried behind this building. And some of that capacity will be able to serve the incoming generator. We got a grant for a generator some time ago, and so this fuel capacity can be both the furnace and the generator. So it was temporary heating, boiler contract, propane. There's a feeder tank that also serves the boiler that was not functioning properly. So that was repaired, and the last piece of this, the work is yet to happen, but it will happen imminently. The return pipes, I get my terminology wrong. The return pipes that take the water in the steam system back down to the boiler are very old, and we believe, if you look at the outside, you can't imagine what the inside looks like. So we're going to end up replacing about 100 feet of that piping, which affects the heat on the east side of the building, and you'll observe that's the room that we're in. So with those pipes replaced, everything should be working brand-new as it ought to. And personally, I'm really glad that Blum decided it because that's been a lot in the last month for everyone who worked in this building and certainly for those of us who worked on putting it back together. With that explanation, is there a motion to perform the budget modification transferring the ARPA funds in total amount of $67,881.54? And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that concludes our scheduled agenda items. The next board meeting will be held Wednesday, January 17th, at 7:00 PM here at the historic Lots of Pacer Hall. The meeting is at 7:00 here, and we have a workshop before then at 6:00 in the mayor's office. Those are all open to the public, as is our regular workshop in the mayor's office, January 10th, 2024. I may need to say that, at 6:00 PM. Moving into committed reports, trustee Schilling?
We just said the LoSAP. Yes. We did have a conference call on Monday with the, regarding landfill and the electricity over there, solar possibilities. So that's, we're still going forward, getting more information from the company at this point. And we're waiting to get, we're looking to do the next step, and we're waiting to hear what ideas they have for the future. So we've been extra.
Great, thanks for keeping that investigation.
When we get that report, we will get that to everybody, and start looking at it.
It's great. Thank you, Bill. Trustee Baldino?
I will read the justice court report. So the total money collected and remitted to the state comptroller, $3,445 in fines, $754 in surcharges, zero in civil fees, for a total of $4,199,000. It's interesting, this is the first time that I, this season that I saw the no overnight parking, which is a $45 fine, which you can avoid if you go to the hotel and buy a pass to park in one of our municipal lots for $25, correct?
Correct.
Correct? So it's savings, and it'll last all winter, as opposed to $45 every time you are parking in the street after 10:00 PM.
Yeah, between 1:00 and 6:00.
Between 1:00 and 6:00, yes.
Thank you, trustee Baldino. Trustee Mangieri, please.
The monthly police report for November 2023, including 19 incidences. There was nine uniform traffic tickets issued, four parking tickets, and there were three arrests.
Thank you. The deputy mayor is out of town tonight, traveling to see family for the holidays. If she were here, she would tell you, enjoy the Tivoli bays, enjoy Clermont State Park. I don't know what the tick update is, but she usually speaks to that. I don't think it's been a hard freeze, so there probably still tastes.
A lot of them.
There you go.
That's the answer.
And of course, always wonderful offerings on at the Tivoli Free Library downstairs. I have a number of things. We'll begin with the Climate Smart Communities Task Force. Met twice since I last, at this meeting. We have a wonderful group of volunteers serving on that task force. Climate Smart Communities is a state program whereby municipalities can execute a number of actions. There are scores of actions as you execute them and you document that you executed them. You can upload them into this portal and receive points and eventually a certification. So there's bronze, silver, and gold. There are a number of bronze communities in the state, and silver drops off, and I hope there's gold out there somewhere. So we're going for bronze certification, and we expect to have everything uploaded for our 120 points. We're shooting for an April submission. We've got about 50 points already uploaded, and that group has committed to meeting twice monthly with our computers open to keep pushing documents in there and get the uploading done. So there's lots of momentum behind the Climate Smart Communities Task Force in Tivoli again, and once we achieve that bronze certification, it gets you lots of points on all sorts of grants and grant programs. Talk a bit about flooding, but I was speaking with the engineer following the tremendous rains of the last two weeks, and being a climate smart community is a very good thing when you're going for any of that climate mitigation funding out there. Winterfest, we had a wonderful Winterfest on Saturday. It was, it was a great time for everyone who showed up. I think you sort of had a hot dog at that event?
I had a hot dog.
Very nice. Good, I think I had the last two, and everyone else had left, so make sure the kids got theirs first. I want to say a big thank you to the Village of Tivoli Department of Public Works for getting everything lit up and cleaned up and everything they did related to that event. Tremendous thank you to the Tivoli Fire Department, who helped in many aspects of Winterfest. Ralph is what we're calling him this year, driving the fire truck around with Santa. Big thanks to Santa. We got all around, we had some young Tivolians who got some community service hours, wrapping all the presents that I have the pleasure of distributing with Ralph and Santa on the number 12 fire truck around the village to the children. Thank you to many Tivoli businesses who contributed so that we could have the wonderful horse and wagon rides downtown. And the deputy mayor, who organized that event, did a great job. So yeah, we'll look ahead to the spring and our next festivals, but we got through Community Day, street painting, and Winterfest. Might even get that talent show back again in March. There's a sort of a gap in that, what we did with the library. All right, Winterfest. The Loop Bus. I think everyone by now has heard this terrible news coming from Dutchess County Government through the Transit Department, originating in the state legislature. When the state legislature did the new budget, funding to the Loop Bus system in Dutchess County was cut. The transit folks get to try and figure out a route system based on their new budget they've been given, and there were some routes added down county, in the southern part of the county, and there were other routes throughout the county that were cut or truncated. And Loop C, which comes up to Tivoli, if nothing changes, March 31st, the new schedule goes into effect, and our Loop Bus stops at Tops in Rhinebeck. It will no longer serve the township of Red Hook, Bar College, Village Tivoli, Village of Red Hook. This news showed up at the county's budget presentation about two weeks ago. Quickly, the news has spread, and needless to say, myself, Mayor Smythe, supervisor McCann, all the boards of the three municipalities, the Bar College administration, right up to President Podstein, this northern part of the county are raising a lot of noise about the incredible negative impacts this will have on our communities, especially the most vulnerable who use the bus service. And there was a big meeting in Rhinebeck Town Hall last week. I think a number of you were able to see that on Canada. It was covered in other media. And uniformly, for two hours, many, many people spoke, and everyone said, don't do this, this is a terrible idea. You have to take a second look. In response to all of this, Commissioner Bob Ballkeins from the Highway, County EPW and Highway has invited the various stakeholders to join a task force that's going to meet twice monthly, starting, could be as soon as next week, to try and take a second look at this. I don't want to raise anyone's expectations that they're just going to restore the Route C unaltered, but we are all getting to come to the table that the stakeholders would be Village of Tivoli, Village of Red Hook, Town of Red Hook, Bar College, and maybe a couple others. Someone from the Red Hook Community Center, for example, spoke very well at that meeting last week. So we'll see what we can do. If it were up to me and this board, I'm sure we would say, put it back. And frankly, if the ridership was low, maybe you need a better schedule, more offerings, perhaps not less. So we'll see where this goes. All I can say right now is there's a dire change coming to our community, and there's a conversation that's going to get started. I don't know where things are going to go from here. And, you know, I hope that in Poughkeepsie, the county legislature and the incoming county exec can take a real look at this. It seems from everyone that spoke at the meeting, this is a time when we should be looking at more public service, not less, public transportation, not less. And lastly on this, I'll say that there was recently a community needs assessment performed, and a number of the communities worked on it. I believe it was through Pattern for Progress. It's a wonderful 85-page document, if you haven't seen it. And transportation was number two on the list of needs in our areas. So I believe it was right behind food insecurity, and then housing was even behind transportation, if I have a straight. But it's up at the top, so we'll take a look, and we will keep Tivolians posted. We have talked quite a bit about the boiler. It's in, it's working, and we still have to do some pipe work to affect if he's out of the building. And I want to say we worked with Nolan Propane and their subcontractor Huber, who's their plumbing company, and they've been great to work with. We had to make a hard choice between how much we spent and how swiftly they could get done, and they definitely, as soon as we said, you're hired, they worked almost every day to get it in. They really hustle, and so far, it's been nice working with them, I have to say. We had our second horrendous rainstorm in two weekends. It was awful flooding all throughout the village and up and down the east coast, frankly. We had to close Memorial Drive, which continues, unfortunately, to be the worst flooding area in the village, closely followed by sections of Faroe and Montgomery. I don't see any reason to think this isn't going to keep happening and getting worse with the climate crisis. So just to restate what the village board's been doing for the last two years, we did a large drainage study, a two-part study, conducted by Ty and Bonds, which looked at flooding throughout the village. We identified sort of two worst areas, which are essentially Tivoli acres, especially Memorial Drive, but the whole area. And the other area is Northern Montgomery Street, Faroe Avenue. There's a lot of bad flooding over there. Those studies, phase two, involves conceptual designs of stormwater infrastructure projects that could help those areas. And I won't go into greater detail, but it's upsizing pipes, adding catch basins in both areas. We have a current grant application out right now under the Community Development Block Grant Program. Should give back in January, perhaps, whether we won that. And that grant, we applied to actually get some funding to get started on those improvements at Memorial Drive. Fingers crossed for that. And just today, I was speaking with engineers from Ty and Bond about other funding sources to continue the improvements needed in the development as well as start tackling Faroe and Montgomery. Dutchess County has had a hazard mitigation plan, first done in 2016, that is currently being updated, and that's relating to FEMA funding. Every municipality in the county gets what's called an annex. It's their little chapter in the plan. In the Tivoli Annex, we took the findings from this Ty and Bond study and put those right in there. So these two identify areas of need and projects to address them are in the county hazard mitigation plan, which will open us up to, open up to us FEMA funding. And so we are going to keep chasing that and other funding that we can to address the stormwater challenges in the village. We all know it's the infamous Tivoli clay. We've got 96% clay in this village. It doesn't soak up the water well, and the challenges the flooding continues to pose are great, and we're going to have to keep going after funding and figuring out the stormwater. If you're ever having a stormwater emergency and your basement is full of water and the threshold is damaged to life or property, if your electrical panel, if your boiler, if any of your hot water heater, if any of that stuff is going underwater, do call 911, and the magnificent Tivoli Fire Department will get called by dispatch from 911 and, if appropriate, pump the basement if it's threatening to life and property. So another wonderful thing they do in our community. Okay, I'm going to open up to Okay, I'm going to open up to public comment right now, and then I want to come back with a couple other things. So at this time, if you have any, if you'd like to address the board, sir, we'd be here to hear from you.
Well, me?
You are the public tonight, so thank you for being here.
Yes. So, well, yeah, we had spoken earlier about the regulations about parking and how Catskill does it, which is basically any time that there's on the forecast, a prediction of freezing precipitation, that you can't park on the streets. And I was just wondering why Tivoli doesn't that, doesn't do that, and you explained it, and the reasons make perfect sense. But, well, yeah, that's it.
Yeah, I also, you know, since we spoke, and as you say it now, Catskill has their own police department.
Yes.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
Because I think that that also lets them be more agile, and if there's freezing precipitation in the forecast, that people don't get off the street, they can run out and enforce that. We don't have that in Tivoli, where we don't have a police department, and we contract with Red Hook PB, so...
So you have to schedule that ahead of time?
Generally, generally, I mean, sometimes they can swing through the village, but again, my answer to your question, just for the benefit of anyone else who's following a meeting tonight, it's already challenging to have sort of the simple, from November 15th to April 1st, that's all you got to know, that's all you got to remember, don't park overnight. If we started introducing, well, be sure to check the forecast, is the forecasted freezing precipitation an inch, a half inch of rain? You know, it's just, it's a little more nuanced and perhaps challenging when the simpler rule, which may be a blunt instrument if it's three weeks of warm weather, I understand, the simpler rule is already generally seems difficult for people to follow. So I'm just saying that for the benefit of people who didn't have our conversation before. So I will talk to Catskill and just understand that a little bit more, what they do, but that's, there we are. Any other topics of interest to the public? Trustees, anything?
I just have maybe something to add about the parking. I know that we say it, you know, on this date to this date, there is no overnight parking, but maybe it would be helpful to have a sign at each of our municipal parking lots to kind of reiterate, you know, these are the dates, because I think the only place to actually read that is when you come into town. Am I wrong about that?
There's two signs coming in on Broadway, and I think there's like two, there's two on Montgomery. Yeah, so it's all the entrances.
Yeah, so you may or may not see that, but maybe it would be helpful to kind of bring it again to the municipal parking lots.
I've not heard earlier, but I also believe some of the municipal parking lots don't state that a permit is required to park over in it, in particular, the one behind the Italian place, which, like, it doesn't affect me directly, and I don't know if they're like, sort of like, whatever, regulations in terms of how things are, or a sign.
Yeah, yeah, I can go take a look. I mean, there's a sign coming in when you enter from Broadway that I believe says permit, but, you know, you can always look at all our signs. You know, the challenge with signs, and we've, I've been mayor nine years, and we've rotated out a lot of these signs, including the signs coming into town and the parking lot signs.
Yeah.
If people aren't going to read the first sign, they don't read the second sign, but signs are always challenging.
My friend just pointed out the other day, as you drive into Hudson, there's a sign that points out that Hudson had the female bowling champions in 1986 and 1987 high school. He just pointed that sign out, and I finally read it, and now I know.
Yeah. So it always, you know, can't hurt to read a sign, you might learn something. It could be useful when you play trivia out there, I guess. Okay, well, I'd certainly save the best for last here. This evening, the December 2023 board meeting is the final meeting, at which we will have our esteemed counsel, Christine Shaw, with us in person. Still here? Chris has been working with the Village of Tivoli for, I actually don't know how long because he predated me, and it's probably long enough that we don't even need to say, but for a very, very long time, and I cannot imagine. I know the thousands of hours of hard work and intelligence and wisdom you've shared since I've been on the board in 2011, and there were many before me. So I guess going all the way back to your first day with the village, I want to say how grateful we are that you've been with us, and just thank you, thank you, thank you. When I was thinking this afternoon, I was thinking, well, it's not goodbye forever, it's goodbye from now, which makes it easier on both of us, I'm sure. So just wanted to take tonight, in our most formal setting that the Village of Tivoli enjoys, and say, thank you, Christine, good luck, God bless, and, you know, you'll always have friends for life here in the Village of Tivoli, so.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate it.
All right. And we'll be mugging you next month with all sorts of questions, we're beginning to be doing it remotely.
That's right.
And maybe just tell us a little bit about your successor, who's going to be the person in the room?
Sure. So we have a wonderful attorney in our office, Cassandra Britton, Cassie, who will be working with the village and other municipalities in our area. She has a very good background, especially environmental, so something she's very interested in, so that should be a good tip for you guys.
Absolutely. Well, we look forward to working with Cassie. Okay, anything else from the public or the board? All right, seeing nothing, I just want to say happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Hope you have wonderful, safe holidays. We've all gotten through 2023, and we'll look ahead to 2024. Is there a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
7:39, we stand adjourned. Happy holidays, Happy New Year. Thanks, folks.
Thank you.